The call are November 21st, 2022, meaning of the Department of Education to order. Adam Secretary, would you call it, roll please?
Dr. Koji?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Ms. Howard?
Here.
Dr. Hudson?
Here.
Dr. Labing?
Here. Have we established a form?
Yes.
Is there a motion from the board to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion and approve tonight's agenda.
How's that going?
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call it, roll please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labing?
Yes. If ever one of these rights, I'd be pleased to pledge my pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda tonight, I'd like to recognize Judge Deanna Henshaw. We have some new school resource officers for their field service.
Not Judge Henshaw, but I'm going to introduce everybody real quick. So this is Judge Deanna Henshaw, our McCracken County Family Court Judge, and she is here to swear in our new school resource officers who we're very proud to have, and I'm very honored to bring them up, Mr. Robert Beach and Mr. Scotty Davis and Mr. Renee Long. So yeah, please give him a hand. Renee Long has been with us for a few years at Paducah Tillman High School. Scotty Davis is going to be joining us, has joined us over at Morgan Elementary School and Mr. Beach at McNabb. Also joining them is two of our Paducah Police Department Resource Officers as well, Cassie Ravens and everybody knows Gretchen, I think she's kind of the staple. So they're going to be on looking and then we'll have a photo opportunity afterwards. So without further ado, Judge, would you go ahead and swear in our officers, please?
All right, excellent. It's my honor to be here tonight. I was very excited when I got the email asking if I would come and give you all the oath. I thought I'd say a few words about the oath. The officers are going to take the constitutional oath here in Kentucky. And our constitutional oath is a little odd when you hear it. So that's why I wanted to explain a little bit about the history. This has, this specific oath has been part of our constitution since 1942, no, 1842. And there has been some controversy and there have been some, there has been some talk about amending the constitutional oath because it is a little backwards, but it has withstood the test of time. And I think it's very important today that we recognize the importance of Kentucky's history when I give this oath, especially because I'm administering the oath to the school resource officers whose specific task is to protect our schools and our students and our teachers and Kentucky's future. And so I think it's a great combination to consider tonight. I would ask if you would please raise your right hands and affirm the following by saying I do. I do solemnly swear that I will do right as well to the poor as to the rich and all things belonging in my office, that I will do no wrong to anyone for any gift, remove promise nor favor nor hatred, and in all things I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office as school resource officer according to the best of my skill and judgment, so help me God.
I do.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of school resource officer according to law.
I do.
And I do solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present constitution, I being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge nor aided or assisted any person thus sending, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Walden.
Thank you so much for being here for your efforts to protect our children, our teachers, your parents. Next item on our agenda, I'd like to recognize Jody Rose from Department of Education. Give his presentation for the 2022 Stillwell after his service.
Thanks very much. I have also not fought a duel.
Have you been a second?
No, I'm not a second either. That's why I want to make that clear. I'm Jody Rose. I'm with KD's Office of Education and Technology. I live in Western Kentucky. I work with Mr. Weaver and 23 other CIOs in this part of the state on any number of education technology issues. And I thank you for giving us a few minutes to join you in recognizing some of our technology professionals. I've got a proclamation that I'll read. We'll get some folks up here. We'll probably do photo ops outside. I've got a few comments maybe on the front end of this. You'll hear in this proclamation some reference to a fellow named Bill Stillwell. He was a professor at the University of Kentucky. He was famous for wearing red suspenders. And in his spare time, when he wasn't doing his day job, he developed these message boards, these listservs that are used even today by a lot of our education technology professionals. And so we created an award at the time in his honor and now in his memory to recognize folks that kind of go above and beyond and do things outside of their normal daily work to support education technology. And so his name mentioned, this, this award is specifically related to work that took place during the pandemic and all of the shifts that we had to make when we had to quickly go to virtual or remote learning and all the work associated with that. But I would also say, and I think you would agree, that it's a chance to recognize and thank our folks for the work that they do on a daily basis. I did a little data gathering and you all should be commended for the investment that this district has made in education technology. We've got nearly 4,000 devices. Every student and staff member carries a nice computing device. That's the first thing we think of. Most of those are mobile devices, which carries on another level of complexity, sometimes in troubleshooting. But you know, when you look at facilities like this, we've got projection devices and presentation technology and audio amplification. You've got, you know, over 200 classrooms in this district that have all of that kind of stuff in it as well, as well as telephones and things like that. All of this needing some level of support, right? If it doesn't work, someone doesn't know how to do something. And so our pure technology folks, our instructional technology staff that we're naming here tonight, they're all involved in that. Network switches, wireless access points everywhere to provide a quality internet connection for our users. So nowadays, hundreds of security cameras, obviously most of the SROs already, you know the investment you made in security cameras and access controls and badge systems and things like that. Dozens of instructional and administrative applications, all of which, if, if they're not constantly updated, which they have to be every day, right? When we have students and staff members that come and go, we got to let the right people in and not, not allow the wrong people in, right? And so this same group of people that you're named are the ones that are either the first call when something doesn't work or the first call when, when they're not for sure how to use a piece of technology effectively. And so I'm glad that we're getting a chance to recognize them. And again, I do thank you for the investment that you made. I'll get to the proclamation now. Since 1992, Kentucky Education Technology System, KETS, has been the pioneer and national leader in most aspects of education technology investment, infrastructure and support for public school districts. A vital part of this effort has been strong partnerships with individuals and entities that continue to assist the Department of Education in fulfilling its mission to students and citizens of the Commonwealth. Named after the late Whitney Stillwell PhD, the Stillwell Award is presented to the unsung heroes that have gone above and beyond the call of duty in education technology. They devote their efforts entirely to our Kentucky, to our K-12 students, teachers and administrators. Identified by their red suspenders, the annual Stillwell Award winners represent the best of the best who show up daily in their, in their tireless service to Kentucky schools and the high quality education technology services and supports that are required. One of the U.S. Army's most prestigious awards is the Meritorious Service Medal. The 2022 Bill Stillwell Award is just as distinctive. For 2022, a unique version of the red suspenders award, a meritorious medal in the form of a celebratory coin, has been commissioned for presentation to critical K-12 education technology staff in all Kentucky K-12 school districts and the Kentucky Department of Education's Office of Education Technology. This distinctive coin signifies the individual's successful and meritorious tour of duty from March 10th, 2020 to March 11th, 2022, providing quality education technology service on and beyond the school campus for Kentucky's K-12 students, teachers, staff and families throughout the 24-month core of the pandemic. This service provided the connection with students and families to their schools for the continuation of learning and student health sports. Therefore, let it be known that the 2022 Stillwell Award is being presented here on November 21st, 2022, to the education technology leaders in Paducah Public Schools. It's a simple but sincere and heartfelt way to say thank you for your accomplishments, your dedication and your sacrifices over those 24 months, as well as for your continued persistence toward excellence. And it's presented to, and I'm going to go through my names here. I don't think Arvita Turnley or Tim Meadows were able to make it tonight, so I'll mention them first and we'll get their ones and certainly the others. I'll mention your name. If you come up here, I'll present the coin. We can pause here briefly. I think they said we'll be picturing maybe outside afterwards. So first up, Michaela Everly. You can wait a breath, that'd be great. Carrie Balki. Monte Hensley. Brittany Rocky. Ginger Malina. Anna Conyer. Chris Moss. Will Black. And Dale Weaver. Again, thanks for your time and thanks for your support of education technology.
Thank you very much for working down here and presenting these awards. And congratulations to all the district personnel who have received them. Thank you so much. It's always nice to have special recognitions. We hope that it will be one of the agenda tonight.
Next item on our agenda is item 4.1, which is the attendance report for our Board of Education.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Excuse me. What I'm going to be reporting for you this evening is month three of our school attendance month. And first up to, on the screen, what you can see are our monthly attendance percentages as the year has progressed so far. Keeping in mind, this timeframe is from September 28th through November 1st. So you can imagine what's been going on in our community. We talk about the flu and some other things like that, and you can start to see the impacts of that as we're, as we're progressing into, into this month. So as always, I'd like to start with the, the awards for highest percent attendance. And as you can see, squeaking out by .02% attendance is Morgan Elementary School. I might even let Ms. Van come steal it midway and yeah.
It's all good. We'll take it next Monday.
All right, all right. Don has been thrown down. Yeah, absolutely. Get to parade that around. I always say, treat it like the Stanley Cup. Like give it to a teacher every day, you know, and let them carry it around, you know, and have it for, have it for that, that day. Overall, our attendance for the month was 93.92%. That's on a different form that I've provided you. That is up .27% from where we were last year. So in spite of some of the, the illness that's going around right now, we're still holding at above 93% and definitely an improvement from where we were this time last year. As I said, anticipate month four, next, next month, when I, when I present to the board that this percentage will probably be a little bit lower and we're feeling the, the ill effects of influenza. The good thing that we've, we've done to counteract that are a few things. Wayne has helped me with some media blitz, information sending out, you know, information to parents via Kenvo and I think some of our staff as well as on our social media and our website about getting your, you know, the importance of an influenza vaccine, as well as the importance of hygiene. And I know our schools, especially our elementaries where, you know, maybe immunity may not be as high in, in other schools, teaching our kids, you know, good hygiene. You know, my favorite one is to, you know, sneezing into your elbow, into the crook of your elbow or into a tissue or something like that, and then sanitizing your hands. So, so that has been ongoing throughout this timeframe. Our school nurses have been doing a really good job about educating our families, educating our students about good hygiene. I cough into our spines or anything. So whatever we're doing to, to protect ourselves and protect our students, our nurses are doing a good job about, are teaching our parents and our students also about, you know, protecting themselves and making sure that they don't infect other people. Also, nurses have been very helpful in excusing days so that we don't end up with a lot of truancy issues. Anytime, and I repeat this quite often to parents, is that we have these nurse, these health clinics in our schools for their benefit and for beyond just seeing them while they're at school, is to also bring our, our students, their, their children into our schools when they're not feeling well. Don't put them on a bus, but certainly bring them in to be seen by our school nurses and at the school nurses. Absolutely. They don't need to be in the classroom. It's not good for them. We will excuse the days for them. And typically right now, I know influenza is about a five day, you know, about five days off and then don't come back until your 24 hours fever free. So we want to keep, we want our students who are not feeling well to be healthy as soon as possible, and we want to keep the ones who are healthy from, from getting sick. So they've been very helpful in that respect. Okay. Enrollment, overall enrollment, as you can see for right now, we are at a total 2894. Relatively speaking, I say this is not really a whole lot of change. It is a slight decrease over this past couple of months, but I wouldn't say anything dramatic is, is happening. So we have a decrease of seven students overall. We had a decrease of nine at Tillman, but we can accrue, or excuse me, we can say that that is a lot of two movement in and back and forth to choices. So that's where we're seeing a lot of that movement because choices enrollment did go up five and Tillman went down nine, only down three at Paducah Middle School. Morgan saw an increase of three students. And McNabb is down two. Clark is down one. So not really a whole lot of change when it comes to the enrollment, but you can kind of see what the distribution is district wide. Finally, the, the, kind of the amalgamation here of all the data, but I want to point out that our ADA, ADA for the month is 2712.18, which compared to last year is up 135.53. And just iterate again that that all has to do with, no, you know, we're not having to take out half of the kindergarten for that. So, and then you'll also see the non-contract, non, yeah, non-contract student information, that is for our out of state students. So we cannot account those on our ADA, which we have a total of three. So that adjustment is in there. So a total for the, for the year thus far is 2737.60. So overall, one, an increase of 144.73 accumulatively versus last year. So unless you have any questions for me?
Any questions for the board?
All right, thank you.
Next item is item 4.2, Will White. This is for a board on duty machine.
There we go. All right, good evening.
Good evening.
I want to share a little bit about our new district improvement planning process. We actually have already been engaged in this process for about two, three months. But I wanted to share it with you ahead of the official submission of the district improvement plan next month. So in next month's meeting, we are going to formally, you know, put before the board the comprehensive district improvement plan. But we've actually been going through the process with a, with a committee based on some changes in, in law. And so now the, the state government has mandated a more robust district improvement committee process. And I want to start by thanking Ms. Howard and Dr. Koji for being the board members' representatives on this, on this committee. But you can see here, we have students, we have parents, teachers, instructional assistants, a United Way representative who happens to be here in the back. We have NAACP representative here as well, Amina Wyffin. So we have some, a variety of community members, a variety of school people, and then as well district representatives and parents. So this was a, this was a really great experience for me because we were able to get a lot more feedback than we normally do during the needs assessment process. And that feedback has really shaped how this year's plan is going to look. So just to share a little bit about what the committee did in general, they analyzed the 2022 school and district accountability data. That included, that mainly was a review of the online school report card, which is, I think, really good. It's actually user friendly. You can dive into it and see a lot of information. That included, on that, on that report card, we actually saw and reviewed student survey data about the, the school climate. And we also reviewed some staff survey data that came from a board survey that the board did in spring of 2022. The, the committee also reviewed some equity work that, that Ms. Burra shared, that the district has done since the equity audit. And we also reviewed, as well as last year's improvement plan, we actually reviewed the current district improvement initiatives that we've already begun this year. The committee then conducted a needs assessment in small groups. So they, they really looked at different areas of school improvement using a framework from Kentucky Department of Education, and they gathered evidence to support strengths and areas of improvement that the district could potentially focus on. So they, we, we shared, you know, we had staff members there and principals, and we were able to share what, what is the district doing in certain areas and then where, which areas, you know, could we potentially improve? And so those areas were identified as potential focus areas for the district to improve. And what was really, I think, helpful, very helpful, and this has actually sparked a number of conversations after the meeting, is a discussion we have with community partners about how we could better align and coordinate partnerships. So we have a lot of churches, for example, that help us with after-school tutoring and what can we do to improve that, to improve the coordination with those programs, really making sure that we're aligning ourselves with them. And that, I really think that, that I've since talked with a couple of partners after that meeting, and we're developing a, a way to, to train them on some of the things that we do inside the district that really produce growth that they can also do in their after-school program. So there are seven required district goals this year. There used to be only five required goals, so there are a couple of new ones. But you can see here, goals in reading and math, goals in science, social studies and writing, there's an achievement gap goal that must be in place. And there's also English learner, an English learner goal, quality of school climate, post-secondary readiness and graduation rate. So the, the two in the middle are the new ones, English learner and quality of school climate and safety. And that, it's interesting, the English learner goal involve, we have to set a goal, but we cannot share the data publicly because we have a small enough number of students who are identified as English language learners and we cannot, that, that data is actually suppressed. So that'll be interesting. I'm going to have to write a pretty general goal there. So anyway, this, this is what will be given to you next month, a more formalized plan that will have all of the goals really spelled out. But what I wanted to just quickly share with you are some of the big picture focus areas for the district. These are improvement activities that will go along with those goals, ways that we would like to see those different indicators improve. These are research-based, all of these are research-based. And so the first is to really establish clear targets. We've, I've talked with the board about this. We, we have a new assessment system that gives us formative assessment data. It's really, it's highly aligned with, with state, the rigor of the state standards, and it's already helping teachers have a really clear sense of what kids need to know, not just deconstructing a standard, but actually looking at a whole item bank of, of potential questions that might be asked. And so that has been, I, I believe this will be a, a big game changer over the long haul. It's already caused us to, to change our unit plans. It's already caused us to change our, some of our assignments to make them more rigorous or more aligned. We also have deployed a, a teaching strategy toolkit, beginning with some professional development from Teach Like a Champion. That's actually a book written by Doug Lamal, but it's an entire training program. And it, it, it just is full of really effective teaching strategies designed to help increase student achievement. We're still supporting teachers in implementing all that, and that will be an ongoing effort. But we started the, the creation of that toolkit. I just mentioned that we're going to continue supporting teachers, and that's what we're doing through a new system of instructional coaching that is fully deployed now. We've, we have, we've actually built frameworks and processes to support instructional coaches, and now every building has an instructional coach, coaching, a caseload of teachers. That caseload will increase in the coming months, starting in January, we will double the caseload and even over, over double in some cases. And so I'm really excited about that. That, we're focusing around student engagement, we're focusing around rigor, we're focusing around effective classroom management if necessary, but all of these areas, you know, we're, we're trying to reach for that vision of excellent instruction that we've discussed in earlier meetings. We want to increase a sense of belonging among our minority students, beginning with our AP classes, and this is measured through student voice data, through surveys, just do, you know, we, we've already engaged a lot of our AP students around how they, you know, do they really feel like they belong in the class, especially among our minority students? And the, the conversations we've had are really enlightening. And I, while I think our teachers are doing a, a good job with, with AP in general, I do believe there are things we can do as a school that will help increase the sense of belonging that, that students would report. And so we're, we're actually engaged with, with our, with different student groups to actually, to help us roll this out and to help, to help advise us on how to get valid survey data, how to get focus group data that will help us measure this. We're also being guided by Equal Opportunity Schools, a nonprofit that we've been working with for a few years. And it is, they're, they're super helpful. They have really guided us on, on how to go about doing that in a research-based way and in a way that has worked for other districts. And we, we discussed this with, with multiple board members as well. One of the big goals or activities is to improve communication systems at the district school and classroom level so that we're really communicating clearly both with staff school at classroom level so that we're really communicating clearly both with staff, with students, and with parents about what we're doing in the school and, and so that everybody's on the same page. We realized, especially through the pandemic, that some of our communication channels broke down, and that there were just, there were some, some ways that we can improve our communication, especially with parents and the community. So next step, we're going to be putting the plan together, and I want, we're going to be submitting it to you. I will formally present it next, next month, but wanted to give you the big, the kind of the big picture this month so that I can get any feedback from you that you might have over the next couple of weeks. So any questions?
Are there any questions for Ms. Wyckes and the board?
All right, thanks. Okay.
The instructional, you talk about the instructional coaches.
Yes.
Kind of, kind of what they're doing. Any chance we can get to zero missed assignments?
Zero missed assignments? I would love that. And that is, you know, and that's a, that's a, that's actually been a goal of the district for, for a while. And what we've realized is part of that definitely is follow-up on the, on the student.
Right.
But there's another large part of it that has to do with how the assignment's being assigned and what the assignment is, and what, what are the activities that lead up to that assignment being, being assigned. And I think parents, you know, parents know that feeling of, you know, when a student, when their child comes home and may or may not know how to do the homework. And we find that there are, while there are a variety of reasons for, you know, students not, not doing the work, they, they definitely need support reactively, meaning on the back end. If they don't do it, we need to support them and get them to know it. They need to be accountable, and we need to be following up with them, supporting them in that effort. But we also have, we also recognize that on the front end, on the proactive end, we can do a little bit more, I think, to help make them successful in terms of how we structure it. So actually, that is the goal, and I'm hoping that in coaching already, we've seen, we've, we've really, you know, it's been, it's been very helpful to see the patterns of, of needs across the, across the district. And the district identified, you know, before we ever started coaching, we built a framework of, you know, what, this is the vision for excellent instruction that I shared with you last spring. And in that, we, we actually did walkthroughs of every classroom, two different times last year, we're getting ready to do it again this year, where we were, where we could survey very quickly, what are we seeing in, in the classroom? What are we seeing, especially on these four impact areas? Well, it's very consistent where we can improve. The, the data showed we can improve somewhat in rate, in making sure that we're aligned with the rigor of the standard, number one. And then number two, that the, the biggest area is an area of student ownership. We actually have positive cultures in our classroom. It's, in general, our district is, has good classroom management and good class culture. Where we could improve is how engaged students are in the learning at any given moment. In other words, are the kids doing the cognitive work? And I think that, when we, as we improve that, that's going to help those missing assignments.
Have you guys ever thought about a homework policy?
Yes, in fact, we, we have a homework policy that is, well, it's an ESS poli, it's an Extended School Services Policy about homework, that it, that talks about missing work. But I don't know, are you talking about for teachers or for kids?
For kids, I'm talking about, in our district, we finally got a homework policy put together where so many minutes of homework instruction, you know, versus, you know, like maybe if you got a kid in sixth grade doing three hours of homework and all of that, it was pretty much laid out that we put timeframes on it.
Oh, okay.
Per grade number.
How much, how many hours a student should have, how much homework they should have at a given night? Okay.
That's good.
We do have guidelines up on, on that in, in different schools, but I, in terms of a formal policy, we do not have that, to my knowledge.
Because I really believe that that has a lot to do with missing assignments, you know, that kids get overloaded. When we did, Dr. Koji and I, we went to the, the middle school where Mrs. Jones was the principal, and we, the project you asked us to do, you know, what, what the obstacles are. And one of the main concerns students were having is, I don't have enough time to get my homework in. If I'm, you know, if I'm going to participate in this, I'm going to participate in that, then when I get home, it's later.
Later.
Yeah.
I remember I was on SBDM years ago at Clark, we discussed the homework policy.
Okay.
Made no homework on Wednesday nights because a lot of kids went to church activities.
Yeah.
We did, we did that, but I don't know.
And it may be, individual schools may have one. Any principals who are here want to speak to that? I mean, is there a formal policy in your building now? Okay.
Yeah, our SPDM said that we'd just do homework on Monday.
Can you speak a little louder?
Yes, our SPDM agreed to Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays for homework, specifically guidance is for reading and math, because we were trying to align it to with the groups that support us about the tutoring.
I, I think it's, it's good feedback.
You know, because homework is not effective if kids, the more, don't understand it.
Right.
If they don't have the time to do it, and then if the students see that it is redundant work, it has to be meaningful, even at home.
That's right. That's right.
Any other questions from the board? Would anybody on the committee, ensure group committee, like in our community, we would talk about the process and not, as a matter of opportunity?
No. Even I could both talk.
Right.
All right.
And I will say that Amina and Ann both offered some really good feedback about students tracking their own progress, and, and, and we're, we're actually looking at that as well. I didn't mention that in one of these bullet points, but there are a few more things that you'll see in the plan that I, I didn't cover tonight. They, they had some great ideas.
Any other questions? Thank you for your question.
Thanks.
Thank you for sharing your committee. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are included on tonight's agenda. If you're here tonight and would like to speak about something that is on the agenda, that would be an opportunity to come to the podium and say a few words. Here we now move on to item 5.2. This is an opportunity for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are not included on tonight's agenda. If there's no one here that would like to speak on any items that are not on tonight's agenda, we're going to go ahead and move on to item 6.0, which is on the same agenda. Is there a motion from the board to approve item 6.0?
I'll make a motion that we approve of the same agenda.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Here we now call roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 7.1, resolution, superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Paducah Public Schools Foundation, 4250,000 donation to the soccer complex, which is BG 23-52. Is there a motion from the board to approve item 7.4?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7.1 resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 7.2, donor agreement. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Paducah Public Schools Foundation, 4250,000 donation to the soccer complex, which is BG 23-52. Is there a motion from the board for item 7.2?
I make a motion to approve item 7.2 donor agreements.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 7.3, amendment to board policy, second reading. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education receive or second reading and approve the amendment to board policy 09.123. This revision will bring the number of parents excused absences from five to six per year. Is there a motion to approve item 7.3?
I make a motion to approve item 7.3, amendment to board policy, second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 7.4, change order. Superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the change order for the Paducah Head Start BG 20-236. Change order number eight reflects an increase of 43,081,56 cents for labor, material, and equipment to be modeled for Paducah to replace puddings in the audit for. Is there a motion to approve item 7.4?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7.4 change order.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
I would just add to update the board that through the project so far, we have, this will be a total of 67,536 cents in change orders that we approved. The overall allocation in the construction project was 1.198 million, so we have about 1.135 million dollars left in change order room. So we're in a very, very, in a very good spot financially on this project. And so this is, as it said, just specific to some rebarred concrete that was mis-sized for the extension off the gymnasium. So financially, we're in great shape, and we're about seven months from substantial completion. So feel really good about financing a project on board.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 7.5, superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve BG contract closeout for BP 010 Central Navy Company, Paducah Head Start preschool project, which is BG 20-236. Is there a motion to approve item 7.5?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7.5.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 7.6, payment to contractors. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the bodily payments for the Head Start preschool project, BG 20-236. This is pay application number 10 for 1,818,588,36 cents, and payment to Bay Harbor Working for 4,558 dollars. Is there a motion to approve item 7.6?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7.6, payment to contractors.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 7.7, payments to contractors. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the payments to Ascendant Facility Enterprises LLC for the guaranteed energy savings contract project BG 22-155. This is pay application number seven for 517,674 dollars, also direct under purchase law number six, which is 207,505 dollars. Is there a motion to approve item 7.7?
I make a motion to approve item 7.7, payment to contractors.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, what does direct under purchase law mean?
We're directly purchasing some of the equipment, lights, switches, et cetera, so that the sales tax isn't added on to that. Contractor buys that, and the 6% gets added. As a school district, we don't have to pay that, so it's just financially better.
Put it by direct, like you said.
Yes, sir.
Are there other questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item 7.8, payments to contractors. Superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the payments to contractors for the soccer complex project. This is BG 23-152, Bay Harbor, Farmington, 3,500 dollars. Is there a motion to approve item 7.8?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7.8, payment to contractors for the soccer complex project.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Out of your, that includes the agenda that's on tonight's agenda. We believe we have need for executive session to discuss personnel, property, and potential engagement. Is there a motion from the board to, excuse me, to make that decision?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7.8.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes.